This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Mayor.
Finley.
Mayor.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Stand up for pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the chambers. Only those on the list will be allowed to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak at final call, publicly invited to be heard, and on any of the public hearing items tonight. So now we've got the October 10th regular session meeting minutes to approve. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we approve the minutes of the October 10th regular session.
All right, it's been moved in second. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. So Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, I sent you early today replacement page for eight A.
Got it.
Eight E, and that's the only revision.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a report from city manager?
Yes, Mayor, council. One of the things I wanted to let you know, we were, as you all know, we were working on an item for the airport that was coming through the Airport Advisory Board. Unfortunately, we were trying to bring it to tonight's meeting, but unfortunately, we ran into some issues that we needed to work on from a legal standpoint. And so we didn't make it, but what I did want to let council know is that some of you, if you're on the council, if you're staying on or if you're not termed out, we will need to bring that item back no later than mid-December because we need to get it moved through.
Okay, thank you. So now we have a special presentation. Casey Westmoreland, coordinator, Weld Way Home will give a presentation.
All right. Hi. So my name is Cassie Westmoreland. I work with the United Way of Weld County. I wanted to come and present to you all Weld's Way Home. This is Weld County's strategic plan to address and prevent homelessness for Boulder County and for the folks that represent constituents in Boulder County. It's the same thing as Boulder County Homeless Systems Collaborative. We're working on a lot of the same issues. So what you'll have in front of you is this little wonderful pamphlet here. This is our executive summary of the plan. It really talks about how we got to the priorities that we've identified. This blue page here lists some of our priorities that we, as a community in Weld County, feel we need to focus on. For us in Boulder County, we're working on a lot of the same things. Housing-focused shelters. We're working on something called coordinated entry, which is basically just a very easy point, same access for every person who enters the homelessness response system. We're just a little bit behind Boulder. We're still building a lot of those systems. So I'm really here to kind of present to you all, to let you all know for folks who do represent constituents in Weld County, that this is happening in Weld County. It's spearheaded by the United Way of Weld County. So that two-page document really explains the majority of our plan, and this document right here kind of makes it make a little bit more sense as to what we're actually trying to do. So this front page here is a little bit of information about Weld's Way Home overall. This back page here is really what's going to give you a clear understanding of the goals and priorities that we are trying to reach. So for example, shared intake and assessment for you, for those folks who are kind of nodding when I said coordinated entry, that's the language that we're using for coordinated entry. So we're still in the process of building that system. We're still in the process of creating something that's identical to the hour center, a navigation center, a place where people can go and receive services, receive meals, meet with case managers, all of that. And we, as sure as you all know, are in an affordable housing crisis. So that's also a task that we're taking on, really making sure that our Housing Authority and our High Plains Housing Development Corporation are doing all that they can to address homelessness in Weld County. So I realize that, you know, probably maybe about half of you are Weld County residents, maybe less, but we just wanted to make sure that you all know that we're doing this work in Weld County. Weld County was just voted the fourth most expensive housing market in the nation when compared to what people make and what they pay for housing. So a lot of the same challenges that you guys face in Boulder County. So I just wanted to come here and present this information to you. There's a website, weldswayhome.org, that's going to have a lot more detailed information about what exactly we're doing. You can follow our work in groups. You can find my contact information there. I'm the point of contact for the United Way. So for any of you guys that have, I mean, you all have phenomenal services here in Longmont and in Boulder County overall. So if there are any questions or contacts that you want to make or connections, please feel free to reach out to us. We're really looking at, in the same way that the Systems Collaborative is working on, bringing people to the same table as opposed to creating a new working group or organization, that's what we're doing with Weld's Way Home as well. So I wanted to present to you all and, you know, offer the option if you have any questions or anything, but just to really let you guys know what's going on in Weld County. Any questions or anything?
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Cassie, have you guys reached out to Boulder County? And, you know, there was a summit just a couple of weeks ago, last month.
Yeah, yeah. So we're learning a lot from Boulder County, quite honestly. So folks like Attention Homes, we don't really have any youth services, shelters at least. So we're partnering in the way that we're learning from the experience that services in Boulder County have. For the folks that are in Weld County, that are serving people who live in Weld County, we've also reached out to them as far as, you know, how are we going to do coordinated entry in such a large geographic area? We work mostly with Larimer County just for federal reasons, but we have been reaching out, yes, to services.
Best of luck. Councilmember Christensen.
Thanks for bringing this forward. It's really nice to know that Weld County's, we're all regionally trying to address this problem because it'll be a lot better if we do that.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Good luck. Let us know if there's anything you need.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right, thanks.
Well, thanks for coming here tonight. Thanks for your efforts.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you all.
All right, so now we've got publicly invited to be heard, and Olga, I always butcher Bermuda's.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council members. My name is Olga Bermudez, and I work for the City of Longmont at Children, Youth, and Families. And I'm here tonight because I would like to introduce to some of the Longmont Youth Council members, and also they would like to share some information about some of the projects that they have been working on.
Good evening. My name is Madison Reed. I'm the chair of the Longmont Youth Council for the 2017-18 school year. Tonight, we're going to introduce a few of our members. There are 12 of us this year, but due to school concerts and other things, they're represented by us three tonight. So I'll let my other colleagues introduce themselves, and then we'll share a little bit about what's going on this year.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Leon. I am a junior at Dawson.
Hello, I'm Lucas Modest. I'm a freshman at Skyline High School.
Yeah, so first of all, we would like to talk about our teen suicide awareness campaign, which we actually started last year with a successful art competition, which will be displaying the artwork around Longmont. We started by pursuing potential partnerships. We partnered with Let's Talk campaign to reach the youth in the community in different ways. The council is also considering the idea of a beautification project in Longmont, and we're exploring where this idea will take us in the future.
So that's kind of where our focuses are currently, but it is also the month of October. So as you know, that brings Halloween for the hungry around for another year. And this year, Youth Council decided to approach it a little differently with the knowledge that this is an election year, and everyone's kind of busy amongst the city. So we partnered with the City of Lafayette and challenged their Youth Council and City Council together. And so instead of challenging you this year, we would like to ask you to join us in raising more canned food and items, non-perishable items, for this food drive in hopes that we beat the City of Lafayette. All our donations are going to be going towards the art center this year, and Youth Council is looking into kind of an ongoing partnership with this community organization that will look like several days throughout the year, us donating things and working at the art center. So there is a flyer. If you're needing more information, we'll be putting boxes in the civic center and around the city. Last year, we raised about 160 pounds of food total, so we're hoping to at least get to 200 this year. So we hope to have your support in this issue. We'll have this week, and we'll be counting cans November 1st. So it's a pretty quick turnaround, but we're confident that it'll be a great result. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, where do you turn in the cans?
Here. We'll put selection boxes in the civic center, or you can take them to the youth center if there's just so many that you can't fit them in the box. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Thanks for getting us off the hook.
Oh, sure.
But it might be, I mean, there's also candidates here and some that aren't here. Perhaps you should reach out to them as well. Those are potential, possibly, council members that it'd probably be a good idea to hit them up too and say you need help.
Sure. I think that would be a great idea. We will take that into consideration.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. Even though we're off the hook, I think you've raised the bar. Now we're not just competing with you, we're competing with the City of Lafayette. So we really have to work hard to win this. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we have a good shot at taking home the trophy, but I'd like to say that we worked together and not that the youth pulled most of the weight. So take that as you may, and I look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coleman Pearson.
Hi, I'm Coleman Pearson. Thanks for being here. Thanks for spending time with me the other day, Mayor. Situation isn't getting any...
Thank you. Yeah. Where do you turn in the cans?
Here. We'll put selection boxes in the civic center, or you can take them to the youth center if there's just so many that you can't fit them in the box. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Thanks for getting us off the hook.
Oh, sure.
But it might be, I mean, there's also candidates here and some that aren't here. Perhaps you should reach out to them as well. Those are potential, possibly, council members that it'd probably be a good idea to hit them up, too, and say, you need help.
Sure. I think that would be a great idea. We will take that into consideration.
Councilmember Beck.
Thank you. Even though we're off the hook, I think you've raised the bar. Now, we're not just competing with you, we're competing with the City of Lafayette. So, we really have to work hard to win this. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we have a good shot at taking home the trophy, but I'd like to say that we worked together and not that the youth pulled most of the weight. So, take that as you may, and I look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coleman Pearson.
Hi. I'm Coleman Pearson. Thanks for being here. Thanks for spending time with me the other day, Mayor. Situation isn't getting any better. It's getting worse. Maybe it's one of the things where it's going to get worse before it gets better. You know, we're going through a transition. I seem to feel like I trust this new manager, but there's, we have a lot of issues. This mediation is one thing I've researched, and it's like we're having problems with it all across the country on its credibility. And, you know, I was asked to sign papers that I can see three or four civil rights violations that, you know, maybe I'm just a dummy, but I know there's somebody that's going to speak after me that's been in this situation and has a lot more difficulties with it than I have. But the bullying is the biggest thread through this whole thing. And I believe you signed a referendum here last year, 123, number 123. And, you know, words do us a lot of good, you know, the actions. I applaud you, kids, from, you know, getting involved with civics. You know, Coach Katie tried to direct me there, but, you know, thank God he gave me the little bit of lessons I do have. I wouldn't be standing here, I don't think, you know? We don't teach people what's right and wrong in this country anymore. You know, I'm mentally ill. I've been advocating for myself for years. It's a stigma, yeah. And people treat you badly. Your cameraman at this café the other day, "I'm going to ignore you." Now, there's nicer ways to say, "Hey, I'm busy. Don't talk to me now," you know? There's all kinds of ways you can be more accommodating and kinder to people. It just takes the effort. Thank you.
Monica Vargas.
Hi. My name's Monica Vargas, and I live at the Suites right now. And I just wanted to talk about the safety there and everything else that goes along with it. I've lived there for over a year, about a year and a half almost. And last October of 2016, I informed the management and Longmont Housing about bullying, and nothing was done about it. I asked for mediation, and I haven't received it still to this day. I was also, I was informed that we couldn't have mediation because the person that was bullying me didn't want to have it. That was, and for Longmont Housing, they told me the alternative to all this was for me to move or for me to stay away from the person instead of dealing with the situation. And other residents there have moved from there because they don't deal with the issue that's going on there. Then, during our renovations, January of 2017, instead of moving me to 15 other different apartments, they moved me three doors down on the same floor from, we had renovations here, and they moved me three doors down from the person that was bullying me, and they knew that she was bullying me. And this was the apartment I got moved to and everything. Well, then, I asked them about the bullying and told them, "She's been bullying other people," and nothing was done still about it. Well, then, come February 22nd, I ended up getting jumped on my, I came home from work, and I got home from work at 10:30 and ended up getting jumped there. And they still said they could not do anything. There was a restraining order there, saying she couldn't be anywhere I was, and Longmont Housing or the Suites did nothing to enforce it when, in the leases, it says here that there can't be any violent criminal, no member of the household can do Violent Criminal Act. It also says that any attempt to, there's an article in, hold on, sorry, in the Longmont Tenant Agreement right here, it says 13-40-107.5, that the landlord has a duty to evict a person if they cause any bodily harm or any violent acts. And I emailed, I have lots of emails here from October of 2016, saying they were bullying me. What's been going on? Nothing was ever done. And they said they still couldn't do anything about it. She had charges on her, which the person that bullied me had charges on her. She had kidnapping, she had harassment, she had, oh, sorry. Am I done?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a cute puppy.
Thank you.
Jennifer Sardania.
I'm Jennifer, and I've actually never been to a city council meeting before. I thought that you would be presenting on fracking at Union Reservoir, and so, I was just coming to hear plans about that and be able to share some of the concerns that I had, so.
Well, I'll just start out by saying your name and then address for the record, please.
Okay. It's Jennifer Sardania, and the address is 11761 Airport Road. Thank you. So, I didn't prepare any comments or thoughts or anything like that besides just my initial ones of having a lot of concern about an area that I think is still really pristine and a spot that's kind of a treasure in our town, that I enjoy rowing on, which is the places that I can do that are getting fewer and far between. And I have a lot of concerns about fracking in terms of water contamination and air pollution and noise and smells and the regulations that I see happening in not just our communities, but in our country right now, how people are going to be monitoring that. There's tons of chemicals that go into that operation and safety concerns. And I just hope that, as you guys consider this, that you do a really deep scratching of the complaints that are already presented in other communities that have done this, and we look at the long-term outcomes as opposed to kind of the nearsighted gains that people might get really excited about. Because I just, I'm just doing my research, so I hope you guys do it as well. And I just want to say that I'm really concerned, and I hope that doesn't occur in our area. I think that's been a really great thing about Boulder County and Longmont, that we haven't jumped on that wagon yet. So, sorry that I didn't know how to prepare more for this, but I at least got two cents in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Strider Benston.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, Council. Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I've certainly heard and support the folks who just spoke about severe difficulties in trying to survive in various forms of housing. Just today, the Secretary of Housing and Human Services today was either incapable of or absolutely refused to answer any questions about his own department and how much they're cutting from everything, which is the entire purpose of this current administration, is to destroy our society as they have basically made formal policy. Lately, I only quote conservatives and Republicans. Senator Flake said that the President demonstrates reckless, outrageous, and undignified behavior and is a danger to democracy. Senator Corker of Tennessee said that the President is debasing America, and you better alert the daycare staff before he starts World War III. The President spent all last week assaulting a Gold Star family, Maisha Johnson in particular, and today tweeted out calling her a liar because she reported what, exactly what he said. And Senator Corker said, "The only thing at this moment, if you're part of the team, is to take the exit or lick the boot." I quote David Brooks from today's New York Times, "You can't have a civil conversation with people who are intent on destroying the rules that govern conversation itself. It is fruitless to engage with people who are impervious to facts." And from Charlie Sykes, a conservative radio person in Wisconsin, wrote the book How the Right Lost Its Mind. He said, "When Trump won last year, the Democrats need to perform an autopsy. Republicans need an exorcism. Wake up while we still have a country and a world." Thank you.
Edwina Selizer.
You're going to consider today the Boulder County Regional Housing Strategy, and I want to thank all of those in regional government who had a hand in putting together the plan. It's very thorough, and it gives all of us hope in working with people, trying to prevent homelessness. It gives us a great deal of hope. I urge you to adopt the plan as its implementation will ease the burden on individuals and families at risk of homelessness. We're seeing about a 15% increase this year in risk, and I think that's only the tip of the iceberg, especially with seniors. And this is the first time in my career that I've seen as many seniors who are homeless. In yesterday's Washington Post, Colorado was rated the 12th, headed up towards New York and California, as an income needed to rent a two-bedroom home. And Colorado was also cited, along with North Carolina, as having the highest gap in financing affordable housing. So, I hope you'll consider some of these facts in actually voting today and in the future about the regional plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for public invited to be heard. So, now, we move on to the consent agenda. Did I miss? No. It was, it was next out on my list for some reason, but go ahead.
Thank you. John Co., 1899, Third Avenue. I just wanted to continue some of Coleman's comments because I don't think you need to live in public housing to experience bullying. And in particular, I think one of the implementations of the ordinances seems to be a little bit of question because it seems to be very difficult to get the police to come and escort a person out of your house. Now, with you being responsible for the conduct in your house, and say they bring a dog and the dog bites somebody, they're more likely to go after the homeowner. And with more people coming to our town, I think is important, and particularly for male homeowners, to be able to eject and to get the police to back them. And I, in particular, had stuff stolen from me, and I had a hard time reporting that to the police. But fortunately, we have responsibility of the city government, and I'm not too concerned over minor issues or minor property. And unlike Coleman, I have a lot of stuff, so I guess that puts me in a different category. But, yeah, I think the bullying is important, and even, you know, some of the downtown situations are getting a little bit more out of hand than they seem to. But we're going to have a lot of people come next spring, I think, with all the floods, you know, flooding and the fires in California. And I think we need to be ready for housing people and for taking care of these situations. I'd also like to say, too, that I'm going in for an operation at LUH, our good old hospital, and I'm glad I'm having it at the old hospital. I was just scheduled there, just a hernia operation, but I'm going to, you know, go in and Stanford stated that the most important thing on a recovery of an operation is attitude over diagnosis, and this is a simple operation. But I'm glad we have two hospitals in our town. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Good luck. All right. Now, we move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, item 8A, the first time on your consent agenda is Resolution 2017-99, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Platte River Power Authority, the Town of Estes Park, and the City of Fort Collins, and the City of Lublin for a joint compensation study. Item 8B is Resolution 2017-100, to adopt the Boulder County Regional Housing Strategy, expanding access to diverse housing for the community. Item 8C, Resolution 2017-101, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the United States of America Institute of Museum and Library Services for Museums of America Grant. Item 8D is approve the law enforcement assisted diversion and co-responder grant application. Item 8E is approve two capital improvement program amendments. Item 8F is approve Longmont Youth Council appointments. Item 8G is reconsideration and amendment of R. 2017-95, an amended resolution of the Longmont City Council supporting the extension of the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals DACA Program. And staff does not have a need to pull any of the items.
So, I just have a question on E. If we don't pull it and just approve it, then the amendment will already, or do we need to pull it to get the amendment?
Item G is amended, are you talking G?
No, E.
No, there was no, all it was, was an amended communication. It just told you what the item was about, not, there was not a legal document associated with it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move the consent agenda.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Wow. You guys are going to make it easy on me last night. Passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is item 9A, which is Ordinance 2017-62, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2017. And Teresa is here to talk about this.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager. And we wanted to point out to you this evening that the ordinance that you took action on first reading has now been substituted with a updated ordinance. And the reason for that substitution is because the Project PRO 143, our Garden Acres Park Renewal Project, the original ordinance showed the funding coming from the Parks Grant and Donations Fund, and it really should have been coming from the Park Improvement Fund. And so, the updated, or the revised ordinance, the substituted ordinance, now makes that correction. And so, what we are asking for council to do tonight is to take action on the substituted ordinance rather than the one that you had seen previously.
Okay. Is there any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2017-62. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on Ordinance 2017-62. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move to substitute the revised ordinance for Ordinance 2017-62.
Second.
All right. That's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Bagley.
I move Ordinance 2017-62 as amended.
All right. That's been moved and seconded. And that passes seven to zero.
Your next item is 9B, and there are a number of ordinances and resolutions. I'll read all of those titles, and then Teresa will have a short presentation.
Okay.
So, these are the 2018 budget ordinances. The first one is O. 2017-63, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the City of Longmont for the year 2017 to pay budgeted expenses for the 2018 fiscal year. The next one is Ordinance 2017-64, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the Longmont Downtown Development District for the year 2017 to pay budgeted expenses of the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the 2018 fiscal year. The next is Ordinance 2017-65, a bill for an ordinance The next is Ordinance 2017-65, a bill for an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Longmont for the year 2000. Then there's Ordinance 2017-66, a bill for an ordinance making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018. The next is Ordinance 2017-67, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Sewer User Charges. And the last is a Resolution 2017-102, amending the financial policies of the city of Longmont for 2018. And Teresa has a short presentation.
Mayor and City Council, Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager, again. Ordinance 2017-65, which is the ordinance adopting the budget for our 2018 fiscal year, and Ordinance 2017-66, which is the ordinance making the appropriations for the expenses and liabilities for the 18 fiscal year, include the dollars to fund our employee salaries. The approval of the 2018 Classification and Pay Plan has historically always been done by a separate resolution. This was inadvertently amended from today's agenda. Joanne Zias will be bringing that resolution to you at your next regular meeting, which will be on Tuesday, November 14th.
We're not doing four tonight.
Yeah, right.
No, you're doing all of them. We just have to bring another resolution back.
Yeah, okay. We're doing all six. Okay, is there, I guess we do have someone signed up for the public hearing. Ron Gallegos?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I really wanted to just talk on one element. It's a rather large budget, lots of dollars involved, but really affordable housing. You know, with the demise of the inclusionary zoning, there's a lost opportunity of 124 units. I don't know if folks appreciate when it was in place, about 800 units, 970, to be exact, were included in the program. While a million dollars seems like a lot of money, if you were to go out and try to buy three houses in Longmont, you couldn't. It would be a challenge. You might be able to buy one duplex. What I really want to emphasize is, I think, when we go forward, I think the opportunity to reexamine the inclusionary zoning is a great opportunity for the community. When and if we decide to annex more, I think there's an opportunity to begin to address some affordability in terms of apartments, knowing what the existing statutes are concerning state law right now for existing, we can't do it. But we can leverage opportunity when the developers and new opportunities come our way, and that's something I think we should be thoughtful about. Otherwise, I see the community becoming very stratified, and becoming a community where if you're the working poor, it's awfully hard to come up with $1,000, $1,800 a month for rent. And suddenly, your figure is not 30%, but 40, 50, 60, 70% of your net income. Just an intolerable situation. So unless we want to become another Aspen and Vale, where they bust in their workers from Leadville, I don't want to bust in our workers from Lyman. I think there's an opportunity here to reflect on some of the merits of the existing, or the former program, and maybe looking at bringing it back in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in this public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2017-63.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2017-64.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Bagley.
System's only 10 years old.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2017-65.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Moore. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
No one else is turning on their lights, so I'll just go run through today. No, why not? Ordinance 20, I move Ordinance 2017-66.
All right, that one was seconded by Councilmember Finley. Let's vote.
I'll let y'all do the long ones. How about that?
That passes seven to zero.
So just keep going?
Yep.
No, thank you, Mayor. I move Ordinance 2017-67.
Okay, that one's been seconded by Councilmember Moore. All right, that passes seven to zero.
And how about move Resolution 2017-102.
All right, then, let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. And we're done with the budget.
Mayor Coombs, there are no items removed from consent, so your next item is general business. First is the 2018 GID budget resolutions, and if you'll recess as the city council, then I'll read the resolution.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the wink. I move that we recess at the Longmont City Council and convene as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One.
All right, let's vote to recess as Longmont City Council and convene as Board of Directors. And that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
I was gonna ask Valerie.
Let me read the resolution first. It's Resolution LGID 2017-03, a resolution fixing and levying taxes on the real and personal property within the Longmont General Improvement District Number One for the year 2017 to pay budgeted expenses of the district for the 2018 fiscal year.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move RLGID 2017-03.
All right, let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Boardmember Santos?
Let me read the resolution.
Don't worry, Valerie, I got you.
Resolution LGID 2017-04, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, adopting the annual budget for the district for the year, fiscal year 2018.
Boardmember Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move RG, excuse me, RLGID 2017-04.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. Boardmember Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and convene as the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Bagley, or Boardmember Bagley?
Not yet.
Commissioner?
After this, yeah. You have to vote.
Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Now you have a Resolution RLURA 2017-02, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, adopting the annual budget for the authority for fiscal year 2018.
Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is David Starnes here? Just kidding. I move RLURA 2017-02.
All right, let's vote. And that passes seven to zero.
All you gotta do is read it.
Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, and that's the funny thing, no one ever did it in the tenure, and so I just took it up. Right. I move that we adjourn as the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
All right, let's vote on that. And that passes seven to zero. Okay, now it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Does anybody from the public who'd like to come down and speak? All right. Now is time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, since I've been talking a lot this evening, last official meeting, regular meeting for me, I would like to have some thanks. Thanks to the residents of Longmont, who, over the years since 2008, have placed their trust in me to make some decisions on their behalf for the city of Longmont. I'd also, wholeheartedly, with great appreciation, thank you to the staff. Thank you all to the city staff. Thank you very much. You guys and gals work very hard individually, but collectively, you make this, you help council, you make the city run, and you make it safe. And I greatly appreciate it for the last almost nine, almost 10 years. Thank you. As I said, when I announced I wasn't going to be running for anything, that I'll be around, I won't be as, I'll probably be watching on Tuesday nights from time to time, but you won't see me as much unless there's a topic like supporting the ballot measures that are currently out there right now. But other than that, thank you. Thank you to the residents. Again, thank you to the staff, and a great appreciation and my love to my wife, who's been very understanding for the last nine-plus years, as well as my children, who have known nothing else besides me being, they think this is my day job. I have to remind them, no, this is not dad's day job. But they have, when my oldest was one and a half, I first ran. My second was born during a term, so they've known nothing but counsel. It's gonna be kind of weird for them to see dad home on a Tuesday night. So again, thank you all, thank you to the staff, thank you to my family. And thank you to the residents of Longmont.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Gosh, I'll miss both you guys a lot. I have enjoyed serving with you both. You've done, you've served well, and I'm sure that you won't be watching council on Tuesday nights. You'll be having fun, and I'll think of you, I'll think of you often, and I hope that you do keep in touch, because you've been such, such great public servants, and we appreciate you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to say, first of all, I look forward, win, lose, or draw, I've got two more years here. And Councilmember Peck, Councilmember Finley, I look forward to serving two more years on council with you two. But, and we don't know what's gonna happen over here on this end of the table yet, but we do know that Councilmember Santos and Mayor Coombs, I just want to say personally, thank you very much for your service to this city. Gabe, I honestly am shocked and admire how much you know about the workings of government. I'm impressed by how you've looked, I mean, just how you look at things, and just very impressed with your attention to detail and your willingness to stick to your guns, even though sometimes the whole world tends to tell you that you're wrong. And Mayor Coombs, I honestly cannot imagine serving on a council without you.
Thank you.
I think that you've done a phenomenal job, just fair weather sees, and you've just done a great job, having no council experience whatsoever, and just coming in and keeping this circus in the ring is quite impressive. So love you both, and I'll miss you both.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, we have no idea whether anything other than Dennis, well, Mr. Bagley will be here one way or the other, but who knows what will happen? Que sera sera, as Doris Day would say. So in these sort of uncertain and kind of dark times, I have been reading James Baldwin again, and found a quote the other day that I thought was very inspiring. Remember James Baldwin, who was one of our better writers, was born poor in Harlem. He was born black. He was born gay. He was born short. That means that he had every reason to be cynical and bitter, but this is what he wrote instead. "This is your home, my friend. Do not be driven from it. Great men have done great things here and will again, and we can make America what America must become."
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, enough of the gushy stuff. Let's get done, no. I'm just kidding.
More gushy stuff.
No, it's been a pleasure to serve on council with the two of you, and I look forward to hearing more about you from the community. I'm sure you'll be involved at some level, and it's been an honor to serve with you guys. And thank you. That's about all I really need to say.
All right. Well, I guess it's, Councilmember Peck?
You were gonna ignore me.
Sorry.
I just want to echo what Councilman Moore said, and that it's been a pleasure to be under your leadership, Mayor Coombs, and thank you for your knowledge, Councilman Santos, that you've passed along. So we'll miss both of you.
Thank you. Well, first off, I'd like to ditto everything Councilmember Santos and everybody said about this team working together. You know, I've learned that I don't have the right lens to look at every single problem, so sometimes it's just, you know, having an open mind and, you know, just realizing that you don't have the right answer sometimes, and a diverse council sometimes, oftentimes makes a better decision than one that has just, you know, if we all thought exactly alike, we'd probably make some horrible decisions from time to time. You know, I also want to educate the community on, one of the most fun things that I got to be on council was being a board member of Platte River Power. And Platte River Power is the power company that provides power to Longmont, Estes Park, Fort Collins, and, let's see, Fort Collins, Estes Park, Longmont, and Loveland, yes. So the four cities, and the four mayors and the four power directors basically are the board of directors of that corporation. And, you know, it was the first utility to provide, you know, wind energy in Colorado. We've tripled our wind and solar energy since 2013, so we're now like 30, 31% carbon-free. Craig Run, Craig Unit 1 is gonna be retired in 2025. We're currently evaluating, you know, adding 50 to 150 megawatts of wind by 2021, further, you know, increasing to carbon-free resources by up to as much as 45%. You know, we continually evaluate opportunities to add more carbon-free resources while balancing financial and environmental interests. And we are, you know, we provide more energy that's non-carbon energy, and we do it cheaper than any other electric utility company in the state, and we're more reliable. So I'm really proud, you know, of my service on that board. And, you know, I realize the passion here. Everybody wants 100% renewable energy by 2030. That's a great goal, but you need to understand, sometimes there's a big difference between zero net carbon and 100% renewable. And also, there's a big understanding of what, people need to realize that a city like Longmont, we use 2,000 megawatts, megawatt-hours of energy during a typical winter day. And if you calculated how much battery power you would need to operate, it's hundreds of millions of dollars. I mean, it's, it's really a very difficult standard, and that's why I couldn't sign up for that, because it's not, you know, basically, if you pass sign up for that, because it's not, you know, basically, if you pass that on to ratepayers, it'd be like every ratepayer would have to pay $16,000 extra a year. I mean, I think we should all achieve high goals and do everything we can, but I think the zero net carbon is a much better goal to sign up for, not 100% renewable. There's a big, big difference in those two goals, and, and that's why I couldn't sign, sign on, so I hope people understand that I'm not against 100% renewable, it's just gotta be done, like anything in life, with a balance. And, you know, I've, I've really been real impressed with all my interactions with city staff, from, you know, directors, to workers on the street, to, you know, our police and fire. This is the, I think, the best city, and it's been an honor to be, you know, your mayor, and I, I guess I can't really say much more, but I've just thoroughly enjoyed my experience here, and, but I'm also looking forward to not being your mayor. So, I guess that's it. City manager, do you have any additional remarks?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Took you six years to figure out how to run a meeting, man. Six years.[1448.15]